All right, we're live. Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwain. Hey Greg.
Hey everybody. We're really glad you're here today and have some exciting things as usual.
Yes, we do. We also have the amazing Julie and Colin with us. Hey guys.
Hello.
And Julie is hanging out over in the Facebook group. We're streaming in there for those of you who are there. And of course, for those of you who are here on the live call, we're always so thrilled to have you head over into the chat. Let us know where in the world you are. We always love to learn more about you and where you're coming from. By the way, if you look us up on Facebook in groups, you can find an incredible community. This is open as well as this call to all of teen young living. We are Get Oiling. We have everything that you need to grow, manage, and run your brand partner business with Get Oiling and then some. And these calls are something that we offer for free to the community. So I hope that you get a lot of value from it today. Today, we are going to be doing a real focus. Are really giving a full focus to our seed and starter plans. But I, if you're at basic and higher, I want you to please take note of what we talk about on this call. I can't tell you how many times I've met people who use Get Oiling and the first thing that they say when they come up to me is, I just don't feel like I'm making the most of it. Well, making the most of this starts with doing the things that matter most, and we include the things that matter the absolute most to a young living brand partner at all plan levels, starting with seed and starter, and you expand your capacity and you can get more creative and you can do more stuff as you move up plan levels. But if you're just getting started with sharing or you're just getting started with technology, this is a fantastic place to start. And it costs less than most of us pay for a Starbucks order. So let's get into this, you guys. We're gonna hop out of video and into some slides. Hello, Arizona, New York, Oklahoma City, Nebraska. We of course have New York, Florida, Canada, and as BC Canada specifically, and Fargo, North Dakota on the team here today. Sharing with you. We're so thrilled to be with you today. Today is promised. We are going to be getting the most out of our Get Oiling Plan, starting with Seed and Starter. So as you're coming in, if you're still coming in, go ahead, head into the chat, let us know where you are and maybe let us know what, what Get Oiling Plan level do you have or are you someone who is maybe currently looking at potentially getting started with us? So today, we are going to go over the basics of Get Oiling, starting with our Seed and Starter Plans. And we'll talk about how you can maximize your membership, both at Seed and Starter. And really, if you, if you can maximize Seed and Starter, then you are off to the races at our higher plan levels. We also have two really, really exciting feature announcements to share with you today. It pertains to how you send messages. So this is going to be something that if you've been with us for a while, you may have even asked for or wished was there, and it is now there, and we are so excited to share it with you. We'll also do an actual tour or a demonstration of a Get Oiling Seed Plan from the dashboard perspective, so you can see what all is there. And of course, as always, we go through live help and Q and A at the close of this call. So if you have questions, if you need help with anything, if it's something that our team can answer while we're here on the call, then of course, they'll answer it. They'll type it in for you. If it's something that requires us to maybe look at something together, we can do that at the close of the call. So make sure your questions go into the Q and A so that we don't miss you. And of course, if you are in the thread and the comments on Facebook, we got Julie keeping an eye on that as well. If you'd like to be on one of these live Zoom calls with us, we're live every week at noon Eastern US time. You can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on the list, be the first to know about what we're training on next, and get our replays and resources as they are released. And if you would like to work together on a live call like this one, we do create space for this opportunity on these calls. We call this a work session because we want to work with you to get things done so that you aren't stuck in any way in your business. So you can go to getoiling.com/web site review. And if you are a Get Oiling member, you have the opportunity to work together live here on anything from your strategy to more creative endeavors, technical stuff, the sky's the limit. Bring us your questions and we are so excited to work with you. And of course, if you are someone who would just like to hand this project off, or maybe multiple projects off to someone to do it for you, then you can go to getoiling.com/conceierge and you can learn more about our incredible qualified team and the things that they can do to help you. All right. So did you guys know that Good Oiling has plans that start at $7 a month? We have everything that you need to grow your business and we are designed to help you from day one to Royal Crown Diamond, right? And we work with people actively from day one all the way through to Royal Crown Diamond. And our plans expand to fit your needs as you grow. Let's talk a little bit about what all you get for that $7 first and foremost, most importantly, if you haven't made the most of this thing yet in your Get Oiling account, this is what you want to focus on first. We have a contact manager. What is our business based on is brand partners, relationships, right? So this is your place to take all of those relationships, have them in one place where you can get a snapshot and see where someone is in the process toward sharing or toward saying yes to Young Living or to whatever that goal might be. You have the ability to tag your contacts so that they are organized. You can systemize your to-dos. You can give yourself individual to-do tasks related to your contacts, but you can also create this fabulous thing called follow-up plans where you can basically give yourself the same to-do list and use it for anyone you want to into the future, right? You can keep notes on your contacts and so much more. When we get started with sharing, we tend to stuff most things into our heads, right? Or we try to keep up with things maybe in our text threads, in email, or in the DMs on social media. That's only gonna last you so long before you start dropping the ball and you find that you start dropping the ball pretty quickly. Once you start kicking up steam and sharing or wanting to share with more people. Another critically important thing, and this is something that sets Get Oiling apart from anything else that does what we do. We have software that understands what your VO file looks like. And so that means when you go into your Young Living Virtual Office and you pull your file of your customers, your system, when you load it into Get Oiling, your system is going to know if someone is on subscription or not. It's going to know who their sponsor is, who their enroller is, right? It's going to have their contact information. All of that stuff is going to seamlessly move into your Get Oiling account so that you can use that contact information as you need to, to be in touch with people. And of course, to stay on top of what needs doing in your business. We also send you daily reminders and contact activity monitoring is also a part of what we do here. So if you send an email, you can know if somebody opened it. If you sent an email with a link, you can know if somebody opened it. And if they clicked the link, right? That's not something that you typically have access to if you're trying to DIY this thing, right? You can also send email and text broadcasts out to lots of people at once or to one person at a time. Difference here being when you send something out to lots of people at once, it feels to them and looks to them like they're just getting one thing from you directly to them, right? Really powerful things to be able to do. Campaigns are another thing that you're able to send out, and this is basically a dripped sequence of information that goes out on an automated basis. This feature is included and it works for text and email included here with your seed or starter plan. You can of course click, open and click tracking like I just mentioned. You can import content from your favorite creators. So if you use different creators in the Young Living Brand Partner space that that maybe create awesome communication campaigns or newsletters, things like Modern Companion, Grow Workspace, you can bring those straight into your Get Oiling account to you. So you don't have to create things yourself. We've got free live training to teach you how to do anything you want to do with this system. We're live every week. We've got a write with AI tool, so you don't have to know what to say or how to say it. You've got a tool. If you could tell it what you want it to do, it can give you great results. We've got an app that you can use on the go to manage your system and communicate with your people. We've got Zoom meetings, right? For $7 a month, you have Zoom. Guys, the cheapest Zoom level is like $15 a month. So you're getting it for less than Zoom charges. You've got a Leg Builder link. This is a really cool tool you can use if you have somebody who's maybe interested in sharing, but they're not so serious that they're ready to get a website yet. There is a free link that you can use from your own website that they can use to share and get credit when someone purchases through their link with Young Living. Resource bundles, if you have a team and you want to share resources amongst each other. We've got a ready to share website. When you get started with us, you don't have to build a website. We have got gorgeous built-in themes ready to work for you based on your interests and your market, and they're compliant for sharing and they connect straight off to Young Living where it's most important. There are landing pages that you can use to collect people's information, things like grabbing names and emails from vendor events or even off of social media. You can host your events with Get Oiling. So your RSVP system for in-person or virtual events you can do with Get Oiling. You can blog with us. Canva is integrated. If you want to add images to things that you do, and then you could also use a custom domain. So your built-in website with Get Oiling can be yourname.com. Add that to your flyers, add that to your social, add it to your business card. And then finally, world-class support. For those of you who know, let folks know who don't. When's the last time you reached out to Get Oiling Support and how awesome is that team that responds to you? So most of us pay at least this much for our Starbucks order, do we not? This is cheaper than a single meal out for a single one person, and it's all of these tools that you need to run your business from basically from getting started sharing. And I think it can take you up, you know, pretty far depending on how many people you are in contact with and you have in your system. It's just such a powerful place to get started, right? So if you're just getting started with Young Living or you're just getting started with tech, right? So using technology to grow Young Living and you have, you know, fewer than 100 or 200 people in your virtual office, Seed or Starter is a great place to get started with us. Now, I've been talking about Seed, that's $7 a month. You can have up to 100 contacts. And, and I'll show you guys here in a bit where you can see all of the fine print details about what's included with each plan level. But Starter, which is the next one up, is gonna have the same features as Seed. It's just going to have more of them, right? So you can have 200 contacts instead of 100. You can have more people on your Zoom. You have an additional landing page you can use, et cetera. So let's talk about how you can get the most out of your Seed and Starter Plans. This I'm going to recommend as sort of a checklist for you. If you see something that you haven't done yet, I encourage you to go to the Help Center and Get Oiling and look up a quick article on how to do that thing. So you can add that maybe to your list. You could add it to your calendar, block off some time to learn how to do that thing so that you can check that off of your list here. Now, this is not comprehensive. There is so much more that you can do, but I believe that these are going to be the most important places for you to start as a brand partner. All right. So our checklist for Seed and Starter. First, add your story and photo to customize your built-in website theme. So there is a place in your dashboard called My Story and Photo. You're gonna add a nice picture of you and you are going to share your story. So this could be a simple bio. This could also be something that's more related to your Young Living product testimony. This is going to show up on your built-in website theme. So it's going to make the built-in theme that we have for you look like it's your own webpage. Okay, it's your own site. So put that information there. There's really not a totally wrong way to do this. So get it complete and then come back and we can give you feedback, right? So really don't aim for perfect, right? Aim for complete progress over perfection. Just get your story and photo in and check this off quickly. Then we're going to add an email signature so that every email that goes out is signed by you. I'll show you how to do that here in just a bit. There's also a place on the same page where you can make sure that you're opted in to get your daily emails from Get Oiling with your to-dos and your contact tracking information. You also might want to consider getting your own domain name if you haven't already, right? So that way you can attach it to your Get Oiling site and add it to your business cards. Add it to your social media bios. You look that much more professional when you have your own home on the web and with Get Oiling. You have your own home on the web literally after you sign up and put in your member number. You're in, right? So we can also, and this is going to be a really important next step for you, create a newsletter. Now you can use saved replies to do this. We do have an extensive training on this on our YouTube channel. You could also import a newsletter from one of our content partners and you can go to that page on our website to learn more about what's available there. Or you could simply use the AI Writer and Canva integration. So you can say, here's what I want to talk about. Tell the AI, I want to talk about these four products. And I want it to be themed around this season and these topics. Write me a newsletter, thousand words or less. It'll write you a newsletter. It knows Young Living. It knows you're a brand partner. So it's gonna write it pretty well. And then you can go into Canva, make some images and pop them right into your saved reply. And you've got a gorgeous newsletter ready to send out when it's time to send it. All right. So that's gonna be a really important skill to build here or whether you're going to be doing the designing part or the skill would be to go find one that you like from somebody else who makes them. And then just learn how to click two things and import it using resource bundles into your Get Oiling account. Now, the next piece, this is very important, is to import your contacts from your virtual office. Again, we have extensive step-by-step training on how to do this available for you. All you have to do is look up the article in Help Center and it will show you everything that you need to know. So once you import your contacts from your virtual office, you can then schedule and send out that newsletter that you've created to your team. You could also go ahead and schedule your next event with the Events Manager and share it to invite people to your event. Again, we've got training on this. You can check out the Help Center for links to that. You can meet with your customers and your leads on Zoom. How many of you guys have used Zoom and Get Oiling yet? It's such a great deal, right? And then add notes to your contacts. Every time you communicate with someone who is a potential Young Living customer, who is a Young Living customer, or who is one of your brand partners. Get in the habit of adding notes. Every time you talk, there's a feature inside of the contact card called Past Events. And that's where you can go in and add notes that are time and date stamped so that you have a chronological list. You can reference what you talked about on a specific date and time. You've got that capability built in here in your system. This again will be something that I demonstrate for you. And then use those saved replies. This is an unsung hero in the system. Saved replies are basically a way for you to create a shortcut for yourself that does a thing that you already need a shortcut to do, right? So if there's something that you say often or plan to say again, create a saved reply so that the next time you need to say that to somebody, it's already written. You don't have to think about it. You don't have to go find that email that you sent three months ago. It's there and it's ready for you. Now, speaking of saved replies, we've got two really exciting new feature updates to share with you that Greg is going to actually show and demonstrate for you before I get into our seed account and show you all some of the things that I've been promising to share. The first thing that Greg is going to show you is how to create saved replies from an existing message. And then the other fantastic new update is the ability to resend an existing message. So maybe you sent something out and somebody said they didn't get it, or maybe you sent something out, but you really would like to send that same thing to someone else. You've got the ability to do that now. So Greg is going to show you how to do those things. Then I'm going to walk you through a Get Oiling Seed Account and some of those functions that I shared with you. And of course, as always, we'll get into our live help and Q and A. So Greg, let's toss that over to you and check this, this new thing out. I'm so excited about this.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks, Ashley. So I'll show you these couple of new exciting things here. There's a pretty fast to see and find them. So the first one is the, I'll go over the saved reply from the current message. So anytime now that you're composing a message, let's say you're writing an email and you're like, hey, this thing's great. So a good example would be a newsletter. Say you write a newsletter and you decide, oh, maybe I should actually make this thing into a saved reply so I can use it again next time. You can do that now. So while you're composing, and I'm just gonna go through the dashboard, you can go through the Contact Manager tube, but I'll just say just one message, write an email. But now, so I'll put in my new newsletter. And then let's say, you know, it doesn't really matter here. So you have your, your whole email there and under the Save Repplies menu is a new link. This is what was added to create Saved Reply from Message. So if you click on that, what it'll do is ask you for the name for the saved reply. I'm just gonna leave it at that, but obviously you can give it a better name than what I've done there. Hit okay, and it'll say new saved reply created. If you'd like, you can just go ahead and click the button. And it'll show you what was saved there, pulled in the newsletter and all of this. If you don't need your email signature, whatever, you can go ahead and delete it. Depends on what you're composing, but, but yeah, so now we can basically take anything you're doing kind of as a one-off and turn it into something that you can reuse it with this ability to create a new save reply. Kind of on the fly there, which is a great time saver. Previously, you had to like copy and paste and go to previous messages. It was a lot of work to do that. So the other one, which is also related to messaging. If you've ever sent a message and you want to resend it again to new people, this has been a request we've had a lot. Under contact messages, if you're not familiar with this, under contact messages, you can see all the scheduled and sent messages that you've sent before. So this is a demo account. And so there's an email that I think got sent out. But what you do now is you just click on it and right above your statistics is a resend message button. So you can see down here, this is the message that was sent. So we'll see what happens. I'll click resend, takes you to your dashboard where you can choose who you want it to go to. So you could, you know, pick tags or names or whoever, and then click either write email or text. This gets it with an email. So I'm gonna go with email, but you can see it's all filled in here with the original email. So you can, you know, modify it if you want to. Basically, then you can resend it out to other people without having to copy and try to copy and paste it from the previous screen, which is what you had to do before. You know, you have to come in here and then like come down here and highlight it and copy and paste it and hope it all worked out correctly. But now it's just the simple button and it goes over exactly the same as you had originally sent it. So these are, I think, you know, two of the more common requests we've had with emails. I'm really happy that we're able to get these in here for you. So yeah, with that, I'll back over to you, Ashley, here.
All right, sounds good. Thank you so much for that, you guys. Are you so excited? Oh yeah, check out the chat. This is beautiful, awesome, so helpful, great new feature. Yeah, this is such an exciting time saver. I mean, how often have you found yourself in the middle of composing something? And you realize, you know what, this actually needs to go to this person and maybe also that person. But the way that, that this works is if you want to send a message, right? I want to send just one message. I'm gonna select my people or I'm gonna get my tag here, but then once you start writing. Once you start writing, and this one doesn't have any tags. Once you start writing, it's going to who it's going to, right? So if you can create a saved reply from here, then you can actually go back and send it to whomever you want. It's so, so exciting. Okay. So we are in a seed account now. Now you can see that we are, we're right here in the dashboard. This is what it looks like when you log in. We do have a progress bar that gives some suggested activities, things that, that you can actually do to complete setting up your system. So if you want some ideas of things and actually follow along with the checklist that's built into the system, I highly recommend you check out what's in this bar if you're brand new. But let's just go over the one that I've shared with you already. First is over here under My Story and Photo. This is where you're going to upload a picture. And then you're going to, let's see if I have, oh, this one's hilarious. How about this? This is actually created by AI. It's mine and my friend's dog. Okay, so this is, you know, hi, I'm Sally. And then we'll share our Young Living story here. So what if you, if you don't feel particularly great about writing, then you could say, write with AI. Let's go to write with AI here and we will ask it to write a bio for me. I am, you know, this isn't a full AI demo, but you can basically say, you know, this is my background. Here's what I want to make sure that I feature. Write this out for me and it'll give you something and then you can actually paste it right into here. Or if you feel really good about the story that you already have cultivated, especially the one that shares your Young Living testimony. This is gonna be a powerful place to put it. So once you get that done, I'm just gonna put something short in here. And, and save that. And we can actually go and view the site and you can see how this kind of changes things, right? So it's our built-in theme. It's got several images up top here. And of course, this is where your photo and your story would show up, right? And then it's got all of this great information here. These go off to Young Living's own videos. Once they come down here, these actually link off to Young Living products on the Young Living website. Code it up with your Young Living member numbers. You get that credit. If you want to send people over to shop bundles, again, these are gonna send them over to those bundle pages. And if they purchase, they're purchasing from you. We have multiple themes like this, depending on the market that you're in. This is a US market. We do have themes for all over the world. So do make sure that you have your story and photo set up. The next thing you want to make sure that you do, because you are going to be communicating through here, is to go over here to your contact settings. Go into General Settings. This is where you would put your signature. So we'll put that same photo in here. I'm gonna move this over to the left. I'm gonna shrink it down a little bit. Maybe I'm gonna make this like 150. Let's see what half size, because it said 300. So let's go half size there. Perfect. So right? And then we put our brand partner number in there if you wanted to. And then of course, if you have a website address, you could pop that down there as well. The next thing you want to make sure that you have checked right here is this Send Me a Daily Email of Activity and To-Dos. That's gonna show your to-do list based on what needs to happen on your contacts. Now, if you wanted to get your own domain name, that is something that you can do by reaching out to our team that's support@getoiling.com. You could also look right here under Domain. Here we go. And there's actually a help article on this. And there's help articles in fact for everything. So if we look for newsletter, which is the next thing on the list here, then, then you can actually see several different trainings here on creating newsletters, right? So several of these are actually going to be great. Great for you in particular. So like this one, your blog and content is going to include setting up your your saved reply that you would send out after you when, when you design something that you want to send out, right? So a saved reply, let me show you where those are here in the system. Those are under Settings right here. Here we go. Now we do have built-in saved replies. These are great templates for you to use for your blog, for your messages, and to create more saved replies. So you can actually customize what you want this to look like. And this could be as simple as putting a link in here so that you don't have to remember where that link is. And you can just pop it into an email that you're composing to something that is very complex, highly coded and designed and made to maybe fit into, you know, a newsletter or something like that. Sky's the limit there where that is concerned. Now, another thing that I want to draw your attention to here, under your contact settings, is this phenomenal feature here called Follow-Up Plans. Now, we do have some that are built in for you. Those are gonna be like your, your new member follow-up plan, your care calls. You can actually go in and see what's included in these. So sharing new member resources, welcoming them maybe with Happy Mail. And you've got all of these set out to go out after a number of days, right? So this starts off with the first three weeks. And then you've got your care call sequence there where you meet once a month, which is what we should all be doing with our customers at the very least, right? And if you have already been through this initial plan with someone, you could always go and add this the following year, which is simply going to remind you to have a care call with them once a month, right? And if you're only doing this quarterly, you have that option here as well. And then of course, you can create your own. Now, if you want to learn more about follow-up plans, you could always type in Follow-Up Plans here and you can see in your Help Center articles that go into greater detail. Now, we do have, and this is a really important step, you guys. We do have an article on importing your VO file. So if you type in the word import, for instance. Uh, type in the word import, for instance, you are going to see. A step by step guide. On getting the CSV from your Young Living account. And adding it into your get oiling. So this is a critical step and it is one that you're going to be. Uh, you're going to be following on at least a monthly basis, if not a weekly basis, depending on the size and the growth of your team. And how frequently you're communicating with people. Now, your events manager is another thing to consider using. That's right down here under Zoom Events and Blog. And it's very simple to use. We have extensive training on this. Uh, you can set up events that you can host on your site. Uh, using like Zoom, for instance, if you want to have an online event, or of course, if you're doing something in person, all of those details. Could be placed here as well. You would use this just like you would use Facebook events or Eventbrite or something like that, only it's all tied here. Into your get oiling system and of course you can uh, use automations here where you can have someone receive a campaign, for instance. Uh, when they sign up, these are lots of really cool features that are all integrated uh, here with get oiling. Now your Zoom meetings down here, you can create a recurring meeting link to use on an ongoing basis. Uh, you can also uh, create something that is scheduled. And you can invite people to it, right? So all of that is something that you can do here as well. Uh, and then the final piece here, let's go and uh, let's add a contact since we haven't created one yet. Uh, and um. And then I'll show you how we'll use this. Now, it's going to look a particular way if you import this contact from your VO file. It's going to carry in information uh, like their membership anniversary date. Uh, like their sponsor and enroller information, et cetera, but maybe Jane is just somebody that I have met. On um, maybe I've met her on, on Facebook, right? So I don't even have her email or her phone number, but I want to make sure that I am keeping track. Of the relationship that's developing with her. So the contact type here, this is a product prospect. I could even add a photo here if I wanted to, maybe grab her photo from Facebook. And uh, and for now, I'm just going to leave this as is, aside from maybe just a little background info, and this would be met. In Facebook Moms Group. So I'll create this contact. Now, when I have a conversation with her, I want to make sure that I am adding details about it. So past actions is where we do that, when we go right here and we click add. We were chatting on Facebook Messenger. I'll select that one and then um. Talked about um, sleep and stress and babies. She has three. And seems like she might be interested in learning. More about wellness. Had to run to kids tournament. Check back in to see if they won, right? So I want to carry that conversation on. And I'm going to reach out a couple of days later and say, hey, how was the tournament? Instead of saying, hey, we were talking, I'd like to sell you something now. We're going to go back and carry on that conversation. So this conversation maybe happened an hour ago. All right, and then I, I'm going to give myself a to do. After I add this note, so I'm going to add this past action and I want to make sure that maybe on Saturday, because she had to go to the tournament today. Uh, Saturday or maybe Sunday, I'm going to pop back in and see how that went. So I'm going to go ahead and make that Sunday. Uh, so this is going to be check in. And continue conversation. And I'll add that to do. And now I have this to do on my to do list. Now, of course, uh, if we have a reason to connect and I get her email address, I could always go up here and click edit. Right? And add her email address, phone number, et cetera, as that information becomes available to me, but this is just one example of a practical way. That you should be using your get oiling account every single day. You're communicating with people who could be your customers and who are your customers. Right? Uh, it's not just about the bulk communications and pushing out information. It's about nurturing relationships. And you're going to do a better job of nurturing relationships when you are taking notes and referencing them before you reach out the next time, right? So that is really just a, a quick overview of all of the things. Um, well, a lot of the things that you get uh, with seed and starter plans. And if you notice, if you've watched a lot of our other trainings, this is the kind of stuff we talk about all the time that we need to be focusing on. And developing habits around, and this is something that you have access to, again, at a plan level. That costs less than most people's Starbucks orders. So you can uh, actually start getting into the habits that keep you organized. That bring more peace and joy into your life because you are not feeling strained and frazzled. And of course, uh, you've got that opportunity to share more effectively and grow. So I hope you guys. Uh, see this as some inspiration, use this inspiration to get into um, more effective sharing and of course. Maximize the plan that you have. We will have additional trainings that focus on the basic plan as well as premium. And higher plans, that's where we start getting into websites and member areas and lots of really rich functions. Uh, that you also get just at an absolute steal uh, with get oil links. So uh, I think we had a question here in the Q and A. Krishonda says, uh, can they customize the carousel images in the built in theme on a seed account? Uh, I don't believe that that is something that is limited there. Uh, and that, I believe Greg, that's under customize my site.
Yeah, customize my site and there should be a built in website theme. Section there and there's a link towards the bottom. It says customized carousel images. Click on that and see.
Yep.
That should work. Um, but we'll see here in a minute. Yeah, it does let you do it, okay?
Yep, there you go. Yeah, so if you aren't in love with the um, the built in uh, images on the built in themes. One hundred percent, make it more representative of you or make it actually you or something that you're interested in. You absolutely get to do that. Just make sure that you note the um, the fifteen hundred pixel width. Right? Because it does need to be quite wide. Greg, are you aware of, of maybe like the ratio that might be most optimal there? I know it's fifteen hundred wide, but.
Yeah, it's probably, I'd say fifteen hundred by thousand. It doesn't have to be exact because it does scale it up. Um, so you could even use square, but you probably wanted at least fifteen hundred. Um, just so it looks good on a computer, on a phone, it probably, you know, could be smaller.
Um, okay.
But, you know, so if you go square, it'll probably cut the bottom and the top off a little bit. So I think it tries to center it. Um, so fifteen hundred by thousand usually works on most computers and it looks okay on a phone too. Um, typically, so, but you definitely want to play around with it. Look at it on your phone, look at it on your computer.
Awesome, awesome. So I don't know what's going on with my, this might be Canva or it might be my computer. But it's not wanting to open. Canva. Weird, okay. That's something we might want to check into. Thank you for that question, Krishonda. But yeah, that is something that you're able to do. You can go into Canva and create something or you could use the button there. Um, let's uh, let's take a look as well. You guys feel free to ask questions if you have questions. Or if you have a request for a review of your work, your site, anything that you've got going on, uh, feel free, pop into the Q and A or the chat. Uh, or if you're in Facebook, of course, leave a comment and let us know and uh, we'll bring you out and we can talk. Just. Let me know. Let me make sure I've got my. Like the participants thing up here. Yeah, so just raise your hand. Yeah, if you want to chat or you want to talk. Um, okay, Allison, you want to get a Zoom uploaded to your member area? Yeah, let me pop out of this share real quick. Um, is that something that you'd be comfortable doing on video? If so, just let me know and we can um, we can kind of talk through it real quick. Okay, cool. I'll bring you out. Hi.
Hey. Okay, so I've been chatting with. You guys about this, because I thought it went away. I, I think Colin and Greg both have emailed me, so feel free to chime in. But if I go to the video meeting section under my recordings. I see nothing.
Okay.
But I thought that. The last email that you guys sent sounded like it somehow you brought it back, even though it's been over ten days, but I thought for sure that I had. Downloaded it to my phone. Or downloaded it somewhere. I'm not really sure, so I'm not really sure where to go.
Okay.
Are you in mine?
Yeah, yeah, I, I didn't see any videos in there, so um, regarding, I, I don't know, um, Colin or Greg or Julie, if you guys have.
Yeah, I've been messaging Allison about this. Um, the, the, your Zoom meetings, they stay in your. Uh, account for ten days and after that, they ended up getting thrown into um. Limbo, if you will, inside of Zoom and then I can retrieve them and yesterday I did do that and when I looked in your account, it was there, so.
Yeah.
But that it's not there right now, so I'm literally just looking at that right now, so give me a minute, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I do have another unrelated thing.
Okay.
Um. Just because summer has gotten away with me. I haven't done my newsletter yet, but I tried to create a. I, I, it may be a computer thing on my end, but I wasn't, it wasn't able to save, like I keep trying to refresh the page. But when I go on the app, it's missing. Some of the campaigns, so I don't know if that's just me or my really old iMac.
Okay. So can you, uh, so this would be something that's in campaigns and.
Yeah, it's the August twenty three newsletter camp, it's the August twenty three tips.
So is it the AFC one or the MC one?
The AFC one.
Okay.
So if you click on the August newsletter, let's see what you see, but I couldn't, I had like put everything into the text with a couple of pictures. And nothing is showing up in the text part.
Yeah, I'm seeing lots of text here.
Well, I mean, in the mess, text message of sent by text.
Oh, got you, got you.
And it's not saving, like on my end, I see it spinning. And it's in there, so I've copied the text. So I have it on my clipboard and I've sent a preview of the email to myself because it looks a little different than what I see on your screen. Like I've broken it up, so it doesn't look like one big paragraph, because I know you've said that before. Um, so I, it sent me a preview, but I can't seem to save it, so I guess I just need, I opened up a new. Tab, tab, and I see what you see, so I guess I just need to fiddle with it and. The other tab, I guess, just is not responding or whatever, even though I try to refresh it.
Yeah, yeah, so definitely be mindful where you're working with multiple tabs of, of which one you save. Right? So if you're, if you have the same thing open in two tabs that you're capable of editing, this goes for a page or a campaign, in this case, campaign message. Uh, if you're going to modify it, just make sure that the version that you save is the one that. Is the version that you want, because if you have that other one open that doesn't have those same changes and you save it, it's going to override everything you have on that other page. So I, I would just close out of the other tab.
Yeah, well, I just opened this while we were on the call. I was editing this message this morning. And then I left and came back and it was still spinning.
Got you.
So I guess I just need to kill that tab and start with a new tab and put what's in.
Yeah, and if you're on, if you're on Mac and especially if you're using Safari on Mac, sometimes that can get a little weird. Uh, so you know, when in doubt, maybe copy and paste uh, into something that's on your computer. Uh, and then maybe just do like a complete shutdown and refresh of the browser and try that again. Sometimes clearing cookies helps. Uh, it obviously kind of depends on what the, the issue is that you're dealing with, but.
Okay.
Colin, anything on that video?
Yep, so I, I have no idea. It was in there yesterday, maybe Zoom was like, ah, fooled you. Um, anyways, it was in there. It was not, and now it's back in there and just to make sure that we don't have this issue again, I've already started the download into your video section for. The gallery view and your speaker view, so those will be done. If they're not done already, they'll be done soon.
Oh, you're awesome. It looks like they're done. They're right here in your video. Awesome, alright. Thank you, thanks Colin.
So now how do I take that and put that into my? Um, member area.
Yeah, so if you go into your, which vault is it?
Abundant Wellness.
Okay.
For the uh, education. Yeah, there's a whole replay section, yeah, in there and there's a replay section.
Okay. Zoom replays. Okay, so which one is this?
It's not in there yet. I just figured I need hit add content and then.
So I'm going to copy and what was this one called?
Uh. I don't remember. It was, it was about the convention products.
Okay, we'll do twenty twenty three. Oh my gosh, I can't type, twenty twenty three convention products. Okay. So I've just made a copy of the last one and. So we're just going to go in and. I'm gonna delete everything that's in here. And then right here, we're going to click. And then.
Oh.
We're going to select.
So it looks like it's in there twice.
So it was a speaker view and uh, and another view, so it's, it's basically the same thing, but Colin put them both in just to be safe. You can delete one of them.
Okay.
Yep, so that is now there.
Oh, thank you so much. Now, if I want to throw that into a Facebook group.
Mm-hmm.
How do I do that?
Yep, you go to your videos. And then you're going to want to share with links. You're going to check this box and then it'll give you a link to copy and then you can go pop that in.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Sure thing. Okay, Lisa says. I have a starter plan, but I can't find a Canva button anywhere in Get Oiling. I'll show you a couple of examples, Lisa. And feel free to re, to raise your hand if you would like to come out and chat with any like follow up questions that you might have. Happy to bring you out. Just pop your hand up here in Zoom. Uh, so I'm going to share the screen here and take a look. There's a couple of options. So basically anywhere that you would um. Anywhere that you would add an image, you have the ability to use this Canva button, right? So let's just say we want to create a saved reply and in that saved reply, we want to use an image. So I'm going to go to save replies. I'm going to go to create and I'm going to use an existing template. So here's a great example, click me to replace. I'm going to go replace. And then here. Is one of the many Canva buttons, so it's usually, it's not just a big thing that says Canva. It is uh, contextually placed based on whatever uh, the action is that you're intending to take. So in this case, we want to add an image here. Uh, so we can click add design from Canva. And so we can give our size that we want here, we can use a Canva design type, et cetera, and then we can go in and replace that. Now, if I wanted to just, to just add another image here. Then I could click this insert image button. There's also a Canva button there. As well. Right? So that is where you're going to find uh, the Canva button. So basically anywhere you would need to have an image. Um. I was going to go look at vaults, but no, if, if you're on a starter plan, then that's, you don't have a member area just yet. So yeah, that's where you want to be looking. Uh, if you're going to go to customize my site, you want to add a logo. For instance, if you want to use a logo image, we actually give you a recommended size, so um. Two hundred. Two hundred high by six hundred wide, so we can go choose logo image and then add design from Canva, right? Custom. Six hundred, two hundred. And then we can go into Canva from there and create the logo and add it. Okay, let's see what else. How do I change the name? Oh, you found it. Okay, good. Fantastic. Do you guys have any other questions or anything else that you would like to see? Um, oh good, Lisa, I'm glad that helped. You just sent an email to a new contact. That you sent to your whole team earlier in August. Yes, isn't that such a great feature? Fantastic. Cool, cool, yeah. Uh, last call, you guys, if you uh, would like to work live on anything, if you have questions, you're working through something. Uh, then this is a great opportunity for you to take advantage of. Um. We'll keep the floor open here for the next few minutes uh, for you guys, if you want to um. Raise your hand. Uh, we can bring you out or if you have a question, you can pop that into the Q and A. Let me see. One other thing, I, I guess final thing that I want to show you guys, uh, as it pertains to using your get oiling account when you sign in. Uh, you remember how we added a to do for ourselves, uh, after we followed up with that friend, uh, new friend on Facebook? When you scroll. When you scroll down on your dashboard, you can actually see what your to-dos are, and we're actually in Lisa's account here, actually, let me look up Sally's seat, so we can not be in Lisa's account. There we go. So if we scroll down here, you can actually see, um, we don't have any to-dos for today, but remember, I gave myself one for Sunday. We can actually look ahead in advance and see this, so if I actually wind up having this conversation with her on Saturday, I can actually check this off, so I can click this, I can go ahead and change the date, I did that on Saturday instead. And I'm gonna hit save, and so you can actually see what that looks like. Uh, any contacts that have been active, if they have visited your site from a link in email, for instance, uh, or if they've registered on your site and within, and in the case of the seed account, within the last five days, they've been active on your account, it'll actually show uh, that activity, so if you have maybe sent out an invitation to somebody, you can see who is actually going and checking it out. Uh, you know, seeing whether or not they saw it versus whether they responded, so that you can act on that accordingly. Alright, so it doesn't look like we have any more uh, requests or questions. So uh, we're gonna go ahead and close out for today, we'll be back next week with another really, really exciting announcement to share. This is one we're gonna dedicate our entire call to, and uh, I think you guys are gonna really, really love uh, what Greg has been cooking, so uh, we look forward to seeing you back same time next week, have a great week, everybody.